Asouyous Town Council, Monday, March the 4th, 2019, 9:00 AM in council chambers. So, first of all, I'll check to see if there's any introduction of late items. No, there isn't. So, could I please have a motion to accept the ... Thank you. Councillor King, Councillor Rhodes, that we accept the agenda? Thank you. And we have some delegations this morning. And our first delegation is the Canadian Mental Health Association, and that would be the Executive Director, Lea Schulting. So, welcome, Lea. And I think we have a PowerPoint. Do we, Mrs. Hilsen? Good. I should also say that we have ... There's four of us at the table, but Director ... Councillor Harvey is on the phone with us this morning, okay? Thank you, Lea.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Lea Schulting. I'm the Executive Director of Canadian Mental Health Association, South Okanagan-Samokamine Branch. And I've got James Weldon here to help with the presentation. He's a development consultant. And just to give you a bit of information about CMHA, we're one of the oldest charities in Canada. We just celebrated our 100-year anniversary. There's 14 branches throughout the province, and our branch covers between Manning Park, Asouyous, all the way up to Summerlin and everywhere in between. And the local office has been in Penticton since 1991. So, the next ... We're governed by a board of directors. We have 11 members on our board from a variety of professions. We do have one director from Asouyous, and her name is Shirani. And the local CMHA, just to give you a little bit of background, so we do operate a mental health clubhouse with over 200 people that are diagnosed with a severe and persistent mental illness. We have a mental health advocacy program, which is a 15-hour-a-week position, and we help individuals throughout this whole South Okanagan-Samokamine navigate through the system. We have a supportive employment program for folks with a diagnosed mental illness, and we have a vast community education program which helps people with suicide intervention, mental health first aid, and just community awareness of mental health. And we do help with supportive housing through the Skaha Sunrise, which is right across from Walmart. There's 44 units in that complex. We do help support those individuals. And our constitution does provide for affordable housing, so that's something we would like to get into. So, why is Asouyous an affordable housing? So, we looked at the census from 2016, and the median household income for Asouyous renters is quite low. So, it's about 26% lower than people that own homes. So, in order to attract workers and keep them here, we definitely need affordable housing. So, in Asouyous, 40% of people that rent spend more than 30% of their income on rent. So, what does that mean? What it means is if you spend more than 30% on rent, you're having to make choices in your budget whether or not to buy adequate food, or maybe to put your kids in sports. So, you're having to make decisions, and so you're living below the poverty line. So, many Asouyous renters, from the census data that we looked at, are living in overcrowded conditions. So, there's a need for more ... So, folks are living in one bedrooms that maybe need a two- or three-bedroom unit, because that's all they can afford. And the other big point was that single moms who rent, 67% of them are spending more than 30% on rent. So, again, they're having to make choices for their money. And then also indigenous households, 90% of people that have identified as indigenous are living below the poverty line that are renting. And for many folks, especially the younger generations, ownership of a home is out of the question. So, what B.C. Housing has committed to do over the next 10 years is provide 14,350 new affordable rental units for seniors and families. So, what we're looking to do is not a mental health facility. We're looking to do affordable housing. So, it'd be for seniors and families. And in 2018, B.C. Housing supported affordable housing units in Karamias and in Oliver. And just last week, I saw that Summerlin is also getting some affordable housing. So, the next round of funding with B.C. Housing is probably going to be in 2020. And there is a need for affordable housing units in Asouyous. So, I'm just going to bring out James.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm just going to take you through probably some of just the framework of how the social housing is funded, developed, the kind of standards to expect when it's actually constructed. So, as you see, the province supports a continuum of care. So, we start off with emergency shelter, which I'm just involved in one in Penticton at the moment, the old Super 8 turning into an emergency shelter. So, that's like the starting point for the housing continuum. And then we get into transitional housing. So, you graduate from the shelter into like a bunk-type room. And all the time that this is going on, you're getting supports, you're getting counselling, and it's all aimed at trying to get you back on track. Obviously, in most forms of housing, there is social issues, drugs, people have a lot of problems in that sphere of the housing continuum. And then we get into permanent housing, which is what Lea and Canadian Mental Health are striving for. This is more independent housing. So, people who, basically, they may not earn a lot of money, they're on a low, medium income, and given the rents and the housing shortage, they find it real difficult to get into that niche of housing that supports the kind of like incomes and then supports services. A lot of those programs are wrapped up in support services, so that's getting assistance to people who might need it, who can help them link up with food banks, all those kind of things, right, come together. The permanent housing doesn't normally come with support services, very uncommon, it's more independent housing. Any questions before we move to the next slide? No? Okay. So, how does it work? So, the housing, the government comes out with a housing policy and a mandate. They develop that. They come out with the numbers that Lea stated, and they come out with the target client groups that they're trying to target for the housing. B.C. Housing is a delivery mechanism for those policies and mandates. They develop the programs and the funding structures around those government policies that are announced during periodic floor speeches and stuff. B.C. Housing develops the programs around the funding that they have available, and they issue RFPs, expressions of interest, depending on ownership and funding conditions. That's a very complex process. But in a nutshell, the B.C. Housing will say, "Okay, we want to do 1,000 units this year." They'll put out an RFP to nonprofits. Nonprofits can respond, basically put the case forward for why they're a good fit for operating social housing, and why the community needs social housing. So, needs and demand analysis, statistics lightly is brought up today coming to play. The housing societies have a window in which to respond to the RFPs and the expression of interest. Once they're all submitted, and the closing date, B.C. Housing review the applications. They look at the strengths and weaknesses of the different proposals, and then they'll typically give you a preliminary notice that the project's being supported. Here is some pre-development funds just to develop your proposal further, because construction, as you know, is a very unpredictable, a lot of risks involved. So, when you go in with your proposal, you're just trying to capture the essence of it. So, the B.C. Housing government say, "Okay, he's got merit, he's got legs, go away, go a little bit further, come back, talk to city council, talk, look at the zoning, look at all those things." So, firm up your proposal, and then if it gets passed, we call it preliminary proposal approvals, then you get to full approval. That's when it becomes a tangible project. So, the funding mechanisms, so there's lots of different funding mechanisms, but the main ones are grants, forgivable mortgages, low-interest terms, and subsidies. So, the grants, the current RFP that closed in September, that was a grant and a forgivable mortgage program. So, they'd give you $100,000 per unit as a capital cost, and then you had to put pro forma together, so a financial analysis that basically details whether the project's viable. In other words, what are the outgoings? What are the incomings? How, what's the gap between revenue and expenses? So, it's a business case argument that you have to put forward. The grants, obviously, if you're building 20 units, that'll be $2 million in grants, but there's always a shortfall because the rents are low. So, one of the mandates with the proposals is you have to do rents below a certain market threshold. You also have to be inclusive for people who maybe are on income assistance. So, it has to be kind of geared to levels, different levels. The forgivable mortgage comes in when the gap between the capital and the annual money to actually run that project, so the staffing components, the operational dollars, the utilities. B.C. Housing will give the society a forgivable mortgage. It's still a mortgage, it's got registered on title, but then they'll give you a subsidy to cover that mortgage. Now, this is the first time the government's done this in around 15 years. So, this program currently out is kind of a gift horse to some respects, because previously you had to prove out the project based on subsidies, equity, so in other words, the society had to bring in a lot of equity, because there was no subsidies. So, you still had to balance out, but there was no subsidy to prop up that payment, the difference between the grants and the capital you've got on the actual operating cost. So, it was a struggle. So, this is a new mandate by the NDP, of course, to kickstart more social housing. Low-interest terms is more for developers. So, the B.C. Housing government, they're trying to encourage developers to go out, develop housing, and in lieu of that, so committing a certain number of units, they give the developer a low-interest term mortgage, which is sometimes attractive. So, how can equity support the RFP? So, obviously, the stronger your RFP, the more equity you can show in it, the stronger business case you can put forward, the more support the project's going to get at the approval stages of B.C. Housing. So, how does equity come into play? Well, land is obviously a big equity. If you can come to the table with land, that is, gets you a head start. Grants, so foundations, certain foundations will give grants, Canadian Housing Mortgage Corporation, they give preliminary grants, they have programs and schemes. So, you're tapping into all these things as part of your proposal. Cash donations, sell assets, so some societies have assets that they sell to then leverage a new development, more housing. And again, subsidies. That might be interior health, or northern health. If you're doing like assisted living, B.C. Housing will not pay the assisted living component, but if you can bring some dollars to the table through the health authority, they'll then obviously tack that onto your project. So, you can turn a non-supportive project into a supportive project, where the funding comes from a third-party agency. So, how can municipal government support affordable housing? Land and leases, that's very popular. A lot of municipalities are doing a land lease arrangement where they don't give the land away, they just lease it to the society. That works very well. Community cost charge waivers. A lot of municipalities support social housing through waiving development charges. Some municipalities don't have development charges, some do, some waiver them. So, that's one mechanism for supporting social housing. Obviously, expedited process, you know, a lot of this government's keen to get social housing out, so the more support, the faster the process can be supported. If it's a rezoning that has to go through a subdivision, then most municipalities will expedite the social housing component, just so they can get it online quicker, and they can take advantage of the grants and the programs that are currently offered by the government. Housing grants, again, I don't, some municipalities actually have a fund that they sink away, and it's, societies can apply to that grant, get, it might be $4,000 per unit. Sometimes it's exemption from taxes, so those kind of things, that's up to the municipality to determine how they want to support the housing development in their communities. Just to give you an example of the social housing, there's a lot of stigma, obviously, around social housing, but B.C. Housing do a good job of basically building beyond the stigma. In other words, most of the projects we do are very good-looking buildings, highly sustainable. They have to meet high standards. B.C. Housing is probably the leader in sustainability. So, all these projects have to be at the cutting edge of environmental stewardship. So, they're not just thrown together, they're actually well-thought-out, well-designed buildings. Container housing, this is an example in Vancouver of contained housing, so they'll support innovation. The previous slide was Merit, it was the first passive house. So, in other words, you can heat that building off three hair dryers. Passive are standard energy. Next one. This is a project currently underway in Kamloops. So, it's a partnership between private and social housing. So, it's a development where we're integrating the different housing continuums, permanent housing, private ownership with affordable rental. And that works well in some communities. When you want to integrate, you don't want to stigmatize, you don't want to like build the projects at the edge of town, right, because it creates all connotations. So, this is, you can see, there's a market project, there's a social housing, there's no difference in standard. They're both pretty nice-looking buildings. Next slide. Again, the technical aspects of social housing, it's highly sustainable construction, durable standards, the materials are not gold-plated, but they're to last. So, the exterior is the roofing, everything is thought out, everything comes with long, durable lifespans. Aesthetic design, nobody wants to have like a square box that looks like a sign saying this is social housing. And an inclusive design in construction, so accessibility, adaptability standards, all those are built into the projects, depending on the client. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Well, thank you both very much for presenting that, and I'm certain that we will have some questions here. So, Councillor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCradev. Yeah, good presentation. Appreciate seeing you again, keeping us up to date. I always struggle with the term affordable housing. If you were to line 100 people up against a wall and make them tell the truth, you'd probably get 100 different opinions about what affordable housing is. But just a couple of questions. Is your intention to partner with the town? Is that what your mandate and the reason being here? So, if we could fill some of the criteria that you have for municipalities, would we partner with you in moving this forward?
I think that we would need the town's support for the RFP. Some of the criteria is partnership, so obviously, the town, if you're behind it, like, we don't want to move forward if you feel like this isn't a good idea, but if you feel like affordable housing is something that you want to pursue, it would strengthen the proposal to have the town behind it.
Yeah. So, the partnership could be in the form of a land lease. So, you may identify parcel of land, and you may say, "Okay, we take on board that there's a need for social housing. We're going to designate this land as affordable." And you, obviously, you have to go through a process. So, you might RFP that out, and you might apply to it. It's like, has to be a public process. But that's the biggest way in the spout is to support projects, is through a land lease. So, obviously, you retain the land, you don't give the land away, it always stays in the public realm, but it's usually 45 billion.
Okay. And the other question I had was, what would you see as next steps? How do we keep this energy moving forward?
So, the RFP for the next round, like, they, B.C. Housing's already granted 4,000 units, but they're promising 14,000. They're thinking 2020, so next year, they'll come out, that's what we're hearing, right? So, what do you think?
I think next steps would be, obviously, if council would support affordable housing, would be to, the more proposal-ready you are when a RFP comes out, the more chance you have to get in the funding. So, if you determine that, hey, you want to consider affordable housing, that you want to support it through a land lease, like that, you could get that process going. You could designate a piece of land. You could award it to whoever is the best fit for that land, and then they could develop a proposal behind the scenes before this call goes out. And there's nothing wrong with submitting the proposal outside the RFP process, because the B.C. Houses are always looking for projects to pick up. So, some will drop off the approved list, they'll need to fill that gap. So, there's no harm in having a proposal ready to just drop at B.C. Houses and say, "We know there's not an RFP out, but here you've got, here's a potential 15-unit, 20-unit, 30-unit project." And chances are, given the current climate, they'll pick that up. So, you could support it by initiating the process, designating some land if that's what you have in mind. Or you could just come out with a statement and say, "We'll support affordable housing, we'll obviously expedite the process, you'll give it priority." You can't waive a building permit fees and things like that, because I think it just casts that thin, thin wedge, but development cost charges are something that you could seriously, I don't know whether you have them, you know, it's something you could seriously mandate and say, "Okay, we'll support waiving those fees," and you can pass a bylaw very quickly. So, it's just all gearing up towards the proposal call. So, there's a lot you could do behind the scenes.
So, one of the things this year we are doing is an official community plan. So, we're looking at that again, and affordable housing is definitely one of the topics that you would consider when you're doing that. So, we're in the process of doing part of it this year, part of it next year, okay? So, we're going to get the main thing started this year. And so, we do think about this issue for sure. And Councillor Bennett is going to a presentation this week that's put on by Desert Sand Counseling, and it's in Oliver on Wednesday with a lot of groups, I assume, will be attending that, and the topic is affordable housing. So, we do have it on our radar, and we certainly, you know, understand the need to certainly support, it's just how we can support. Mr. Remanko.
Just building on your comments relating to the OCP, one part of that process is actually, we're partnering, we're just developing a terms of reference for a grant application to do a housing assessment in town. So, we feel that that will probably be done this year, and we'll have a better idea as to what some of the housing needs are. I had, I do have a question. Are you using the word "social housing" and "affordable housing" interchangeably?
Yeah.
You are? Okay.
Yes, we're the second stage. We're not the supportive housing, but we'd be the affordable, yeah.
But it's also, it's social housing, affordable housing are interchangeable phrases. Okay. So, is there any market housing at all in those complexes? There's no market housing?
No, at the minimum.
Okay. Or near-market housing as well? Because there's three stages. There's social housing, near-market housing, and market housing.
So, the last proposal call.
Could you please talk into the mic?
Yeah, it's on Granicus, that's why we have to have you on the mic.
The RFP did have income thresholds, so it had ...
It had 20% deep subsidy, which is for people on disability and low income. Sorry. And then it had 50% moderate-income individuals. So, that would be maybe an LPN, single mom, that kind of thing. And then 30% was low income. So, it had, and it didn't say it had to be all families, all seniors, it didn't give the percentage, but it was open to seniors and families.
But that's not the target market that you're looking at in terms of how it's ...
Well, this funding, this particular funding, this particular funding program came with those requirements to hit those three income levels.
Yeah.
So, it's trying to be inclusive and kind of spread the subsidies out, because obviously, the deep subsidy, the deep subsidy, they're going to bring less rent to the table. The moderate income and the affordable housing, they bring higher rents to the table. So, it's supposed to offset the lower, lower rents with the higher rents, so a bit of a balancing act, really.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. We were sort of always trying to work through a lot of these things in our minds, so it was helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our next presentation is the Community Foundation, and Kim English is going to speak to us. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Kim English, the Community Development Officer of the Community Foundation, and I've invited Sarah Trudeau, our Grants Manager and Vital Signs Coordinator. I'm going to have Sarah speak first and give a brief introduction to the work that we do.
Great. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us. Like you mentioned, my name is Sarah. I manage the Grants and Community Initiatives Program with the Foundation. So, I'm just going to give a brief overview about the Foundation. I'm pretty sure we're aware of what we do, but it's always good to have a bit of an update. So, we've been in existence for over 27 years. Most of the time, people are a bit surprised about that, because they've never heard of us, but we've been granting out to the South Okanagan-Samokamine since 1991. Currently, we have over $13 million in assets under management, which means we have $13 million invested, and the income that's earned on that invest is what we use to grant out to other nonprofits. In addition to our $13 million invested, we also own a building in Penticton, which is new, because we've opened up the new youth center in Penticton. Since 1991, we've given out $4.2 million in grants, which is pretty amazing. And this past year, we gave over $380,000 to the communities in the South Okanagan. So, what we do is we give out and we support our communities, we inspire local citizens to give to their communities and to donate. We do this by managing our funds through investments, and we grant out to other local registered nonprofits. We sort of are a bit of a catalyst in the communities. We like to give out grants, and we like to support our communities, not just only through grant-making, but through different seminars, which I'll go through in a different slide. But we want to give more than just give out money to our communities, we want to spark and inspire community philanthropy. So, some of the programs we have is our Neighborhood Small Grants. Are you aware of Neighborhood Small? Yeah, I'm sure you are. So, that's one of our sort of exciting grant-making programs, because we give out money, but not to registered charities, we give it out to citizens to create a sense of belonging in their communities. We also have Vital Signs, which I'm going to talk about a little bit later. We provide grant-writing workshops, and they're always for free, and they're not just specific to our grants, we just give out, we just provide a general grant-writing workshop to help nonprofits in their grant-making. We provide real estate planning seminars, and also, we're developing an agency stewardship program. So, what it is, is lots of our nonprofits, they apply to us, and sometimes are successful, sometimes they're not. So, we have a program where they, if they have a bit of money, or they want to steward some of their donors to set up their own fund with us, we have our own agency fund that every year, that money goes back to that organization. So, they don't apply for a grant, it doesn't have to be a specific program, it's specifically just for their agency every year. So, since 2013, we've given out $125,000 to local agencies here in Asouyous. And I can, so if you go to the next slide, that's, so this past year, in 2018, we gave out to South Okanagan Integrated Community Services, as well as the Asouyous Desert Society. And we do that through, like I said, our funds. So, we have our discretionary dollars, which means that every year, our donors have said to us, "You decide where the money should go." Some of that is restricted in the community that it's supposed to go to, some of it's restricted in the area of need it's supposed to go to, but these are discretionary dollars that we accept grant applications for. We also have an Asouyous Community Fund, so that fund is specific to Asouyous and can only go to Asouyous charities. So, that's how we're able to grant out to the organizations here. Now, the Asouyous Community Fund, it's a medium-sized fund, it grants out, I think ...
We'll talk about it the next.
Oh, okay, sure. So, I'll leave that for Kim. But, yeah, so that's how we use money to grant out to the nonprofits. Oh, there we go. So, I'll just pass it over to Kim, and she can talk a little bit more about specifically the Asouyous Community Fund.
Great. Thanks, Sarah. To pick up on what Sarah was speaking about, in the last slide, it showed we've granted out $130,000 in the past ... Um, to pick up on what Sarah was speaking about, in the la- last slide, it showed, uh, we've granted out a hundred and thirty thousand in the past seven years or so. And if you look at the Assoius Community Fund, um, we established it in two thousand. Uh, our asset is, uh, just under nineteen thousand dollars. And since two thousand and five, ten, well, we've reinvested that value to build it up. Um, but for example, the disbursement this year is five hundred and twenty-five dollars. So if you think of that one hundred and thirty thousand dollars in seven years that we've granted back, but the Assoius Fund is really only giving back, you know, a few hundred dollars, um, it really shows the need that, uh, for us, uh, part of my role is to build the Assoius Community Fund and, um, and really, uh, well, create a, a, a bigger give back to the community because we know from our perspective at the Foundation, we see a number of applications every year within our annual grant cycle. We'll see, you know, five, eight applications just from this, uh, from Assoius alone. And we can only give back or grant out, uh, a small portion of that. So what we've been doing, um, in the past several years is really doing a focus on the regional community funds. I work in Summerland, uh, Oliver, Assoius, Karamias, and Princeton. Again, we've established, uh, community funds in all of these communities. Our challenge is, is many people haven't heard of the Community Foundation, um, or get us confused with Community Futures, which is government and is around employment. I know, I know, and we hear it all the time too. And that's kind of, it's interesting. I'll go around and ask people who have heard, who's heard of the Community Foundation. And unless you've given to us or you've written a grant, many people don't hear of us. So that's kind of a big challenge. Uh, in my role in promoting philanthropy and inspiring folks is, uh, the endowment model of philanthropy is still fairly new. Community foundations have been, uh, in Canada's existence for a hundred years. There's nearly two hundred community foundations across Canada. Every community is supported by a foundation. Uh, we are, though our office is based in Pencton, we work regionally. And this is really a benefit, um, to the, the smaller communities. For example, in the Kootenays, um, a lot of their smaller communities are all driven by a group of volunteers, which is really important, but they don't have the admin, uh, umbrella to help support them, and that's part of the role here. So the Assoius Community Fund, if you want to go forward there, that would be great. Um, while it does look low, and it has been, uh, established, uh, in, in the past eighteen years, like I said, it's been really quiet. But, um, the Karamias Community Fund, it was established seven years ago, and it's already at twenty-five thousand dollars and giving back a thousand dollars. And that's just through word of mouth, talking about the fund, giving people the confidence to give where they live. I showed you this slide, um, last year, and I really like this slide because it really shows the power of people and the power of heart of giving where you live. Um, Schickley Community is in Nebraska, and Nebraska Community Foundation is really kind of one of the leading foundations in North America when they have, uh, examined their transfer of wealth over the past, in the next fifty years, their transfer of wealth is going to be six hundred billion dollars. And they, that was a huge picture for them, and they narrowed it down to a ten-year, um, window so they could talk about it to their, uh, counties and their communities. And they, uh, determined that if, in the next ten years, uh, people gave back five percent of their estate or five percent to their annual give back, that the, the state of Nebraska could capture thirty billion dollars in less than ten years. So that's an incredible amount of money, um, that, uh, that they've been able to maintain and keep within their community. So that's really what the Community Foundation, as Sarah mentioned, we really inspire people to think locally. We talk about, uh, shopping and, you know, shopping locally, and, you know, we really want to encourage people to think about giving where they live. So the Schickley, uh, community, population three hundred and forty. Some of you may know, I live in Headley. That's our population. And I know in Headley, it is a very big-hearted community. But the Schickley, uh, community, um, in less than ten years, they have, uh, have one point five, uh, assets under management. This is an older slide. They already have two million dollars in expected gifts coming through. But sixty percent of their community gives every year to the Community Foundation. Um, the other week in Princeton, one of the councillors, uh, asked and commented, they thought that people only gave to community foundations in a bequest or in a legacy. But people can give to a community foundation, living in or in their will. And, uh, but the idea is when you give to your community foundation is you're really giving for the, for the, for the present, but into the future. Um, they've also, uh, will, uh, this year, um, have built a, a community greenhouse. So they're also looking at food systems and food security. And, uh, so it's a really inspiring, uh, slide I like to show that, um, everywhere in Nebraska that people are giving back and their, their community programs are being funded, and they're seeing a lot of rural returners. So that was a big focus, was they were seeing so many people leaving their community. They take their assets with them, and they don't come back. So we would, um, yeah, uh, I brought this. Many of you may have seen this or not, but it's, uh, how we promote the community fund. The other weekend, I was, had a table at the Mainly Women Event in Oliver. I was promoting the Oliver and the Assoius Community Fund, and people came and, uh, chatted, and, uh, the enthusiasm when people learnt about the fund and what that meant. They took this away. They took the donor forms away. So, you know, when I'm out there talking about the community funds and the value of them, people really, uh, love the idea and want to give back to their community. Thank you. Uh, Neighborhood Small Grants, um, we have, uh, just opened the online application, Neighborhood Small Grants. We are in our fourth year of, um, doing something quite unique. We're the only, this is the only funding opportunity where people can apply rather than charities. And we give, uh, awards up to five hundred dollars for people to have a project or a party with a purpose in their neighborhood. We can give up to forty awards of these every year throughout the RDOS. Vancouver Foundation is our community partner in this. They matched us. Uh, they put in ten thousand, uh, to ours and, uh, allows us to do this. Um, I would like to say that, uh, Assoius, uh, has received, I think, thirteen, thirteen or fourteen Neighborhood Small Grants over three years. Last year, uh, six, including one from Anarchist. So that's really fantastic. Uh, Janice St. Louis, um, in the front here, her neighborhood, uh, they've applied three years, uh, in a row, which we encourage and like. The very first year in her neighborhood, I guess people didn't know each other too well, so it was a real gathering of just get to know you, who you are, who's with your family, you know? So they don't have any surprise visitors that are kind of, you know, uh, living in their houses when they're not there. The next year was a beautification, and the, uh, last year, they invited, um, the local paramedics, uh, to do AED, um, training and to do, uh, CPR, uh, updated policies. So it's really fantastic. Um, the five hundred dollars, well, I should say, the goals are to, really simple, to connect and engage, um, uh, gathering, to share skills and knowledge, build a sense of pride and ownership, um, and respect and celebrate diversity. The Giving Cupboard out front here was, uh, Neighborhood Small Grants project in our first year. Uh, so that's a piece of a legacy project. There was a lending library in Trout Creek that we've, uh, done as well. Go to the next one. Thanks. So the criteria is really easy. Two people may apply. Um, well, we must see two names from two different residents, um, in the neighborhood. I actually got an email over the weekend. A woman from Victoria asked me if she could put her name on an application for this family in Pencton, and, uh, I had to email her back and say, Victoria Community Foundation does its own Neighborhood Small Grants program. Maybe you're a great idea. You might want to deliver that in Victoria and let your friends do their own. But it's exciting. Uh, must be free and inclusive, and the money may be used towards decorations, food, door prizes, materials, dumping fees, third-party, um, insurance, if they're having a bouncy castle or something like that, and, uh, it must be completed before November fifteenth. So I really, um, uh, encourage you to let your, um, your people in your community know, encourage your neighbors. Yourselves may apply. Um, I go to a lot of the Neighborhood Small Grants events over the years, and I've, uh, seen mayors and councillors there. And people that are hosting these events are always so thrilled to see when their elected officials come to one of their events. Um, and I'll pass this to Sarah in just a sec, but I, I forgot to mention, um, regarding the Assoius Community Fund. Uh, we will be working on two initiatives to give back specifically, um, in Assoius. Uh, one is to raise the profile of the, the fund, and the other is a, uh, matching give back out to communities. In January, we were contacted by a, a, a group of anonymous donors, not the same ones that are a part of the youth center, but they have, it came and, uh, put thirty thousand dollars on the table for me, uh, to challenge my committees that I work with and the five communities that I work with, so six thousand kind of between the, the five community funds, and have challenged, uh, myself and our committees to, uh, double if not quadruple. So that six thousand could be quadruple multiplied into the fund, but it was also be a, a give back. So we'll go right back to the community, and we're hoping what that will show is, uh, how people's donations can really maximize, double, and the power of, uh, pooling donations and the later impact that can be. So, um, some things for you to, uh, keep in mind when this is coming through. And I'll just pass this on to, uh, Sarah to finish Vital Signs and speak to that.
Great. Thanks so much. Uh, are you aware of Vital Signs? Have you heard about Vital Signs? Yeah, okay. So this is our fourth one that we've put out. Um, we did this in two thousand and eighteen. It's one of our major initiatives. Uh, we use it both internally as well as externally. Um, so what it is, it's a report. Uh, I've left some here for you to keep, but, um, it measures the health and well-being of all the communities in the, in our, uh, region. Uh, so it's interesting because it uses statistical data from StatsCan as well as feedback. So we gather feedback from the citizens all throughout the region through a survey. So they're allowed to grade their community on eleven different issue areas, and they stem from health and, health and wellness to employment, to housing, to work. Um, so it's sort of on eleven different, all areas of your community. Uh, we use it in our granting, so it helps to guide our granting. We take it and we say, where are some of the low grades that our community received? And then we look at those projects that are specifically working in that issue area. Um, as well as, um, the RDOS uses this, uh, and our municipality in Pencton uses this in their grant and aid. So, um, I encourage you to use this as well. Uh, it's, it's a really great, uh, tool. Also, we received so much data in two thousand and eighteen that, um, if you go online, there's further data that we couldn't even, uh, fit inside this book that's on our website. So go ahead and, and head there. Um, so going to the next one, we are hosting, uh, Vital Community Conversations, which I believe you're coming to in Oliver. Um, we're hosting them in all the communities throughout, um, our region. So as, as Mayor Sue mentioned, we are hosting one in Oliver this week on housing. Housing was the number one issue area that transcended across all eleven issue areas. So that was one of those feedbacks where people talked about housing in their employment. They talked about housing in health and wellness. They talked about housing in, um, in income levels and living standards. So housing is clearly one of those issue areas that needs to be talked about. So we just actually hosted a housing conversation in Pencton last month. Um, it was attended by both the mayor, council, staff members. It was host, it was attended by the RCMP, obviously lots of social service agencies, and it was just a chance for us to all sit down. It was a lead conversation where we, we, it wasn't, uh, you know, me just standing in front of the group talking. Uh, it was, we talked about the issue areas. We gathered in tables, worked through all the different sort of, what are some of the issues and what are some of the solutions that we can look at? So, uh, we will be hosting a similar conversation in Oliver, and I do hope to host one here in Assoius. We haven't, um, we're, we're looking at partnering with South Okanagan Integrated Services for hosting a conversation here as well too. So I will invite you to that as well, but I'm glad someone from here is coming to the one in Oliver this week. Um, I'll just share some stats on housing here in Assoius. Uh, thirty-nine percent of households in Assoius are spending more than thirty percent of their income on rent. So that's some really staggering stats. There's basically a zero percent, uh, vacancy rate through every single community here in the South Okanagan, Similkamene. So clearly, housing is, is definitely an issue area. Um, yeah, so I'll be, uh, once we decide on a date and, uh, look at, so maybe even we can be in contact and talk about putting on a, putting on a community conversation in partnership with the town. That would be great. Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you. So thank you very much to, uh, both of you and to Janice, who leads the charge here in Assoius and is very involved. As a matter of fact, she was going around at an event recently, trying to rope people into applying for grants, so. She's good at what she's doing. So thank you very much. I'll just check with, uh, council to see if anybody has any questions. No? We're good. So, um, we do have that information, and, um, and we realized that last year, six, uh, groups in Assoius applied for, and we're quite excited to have a, a small community grant. And so I'm sure you will be finding a few more people this year that will be applying for it as well because it was well-used and well-accepted, and I, and I think it's a great idea. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
So next on our list is the, um, well, I call him the guru. He's the finance minister, uh, manager, not the minister, but the manager of, uh, the RDOS, and, uh, this is John Kirvink, and he's put forth an amazing two thousand and nineteen budget for the RDOS, and I'm sure he'll tell you a little bit, uh, about that. So welcome, John.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, and Staff. Happy to, uh, make the drive down here to beautiful Assoius, so thank you for having me. Just got a few slides, so it won't take a whole bunch of your time, um, I guess. So the first, uh, piece of the slide really talks about what's different between a municipality and a regional district. And, uh, where you have one budget, mainly, we have, uh, a hundred and forty-three budgets this year that we went through, which is one for every service. Uh, each budget stands on its own. They're all separate silos. They're all funded from, uh, by a particular portion of the population. The money has to stay in that, uh, service. Uh, we can't transfer funds between services. If a service has a deficit, it has to be picked up the next year. So very, uh, self-sustaining, but, um, pretty restrictive. Go to the next one. So our budget process started a long time ago, back in August first. It seems like years. Uh, we started with a baseline budget, which is really, uh, operating the hundred and forty-three services as are, uh, currently being operated. Then on top of that, we layer contractual increases with our unionized staff. Uh, and then after that, we look at the change process, which is capital additions, program changes, and those are, uh, layered on top of the budget. Uh, then it comes to the board through a series of workshops. We had workshops in November, uh, two in November and one in December. And, uh, in any event, uh, by legislation, we have to have our budget approved by March thirty-first, which is a little bit of an advance of a municipality, uh, which you've got a little bit more time, I think, to, uh, pass your budget. So the types of services, the real, the, there's three or four main buckets that, um, the services fall into at the regional district. And depending which bucket they fall into, it would have an impact on the, the folks that live in Assoius, uh, in your municipality. So we have regional services. Those are services that certainly, um, you pay into, and those are services that cross, um, across the regional district. Things like nine-one-one, emergency planning, regional trails, general government. Uh, then we have rural services, which are more for the electoral areas because we have, as you know, nine electoral areas and six municipalities that participate in the regional district. I guess over ten thousand, uh, hectares, or I think it's hectares, not acres. Uh, so it's a pretty broad territory. Uh, the next, uh, is shared services. So those are services that we share with an electoral area, uh, and a municipality. So in, in the case of Assoius, we have the arena, and we have museum debt. There's only a couple of services. In Oliver, we have a few more, uh, but... And then local services are really restricted either to an electoral area or even a sub-population within that electoral area. So we have electoral areas, Safe Electoral Area C, which isn't far from you, uh, up in Willowbrook. There's fire service. Well, the only the folks that are in that fire service area, which is a subsection of even Area C, pay into that. And it works the same for water service. We have water services with as little as seventy or eighty people on them, and only those folks pay into those services. So things that impact your requisition, well, property assessments. Really, if you think of the budget of the regional district as a big pie, it's really your share of the value of land and improvements relative to everyone else that determines what slice of the pie, um, your taxpayers, uh, end up paying every year. So, uh, you make up eight point one-three percent of the region's total assessed value, which is, uh, quite large. Uh, little bit down from last year, which is actually a good news story for Assoius in the sense that, uh, you'll pay less of the burden because your value of, of assessments has gone down relative to everyone else. Your assessments went up seven point eight-eight percent this year, which is less than the RDOS average of nine point two-nine, which is also, um, uh, good news. which is also a good news aspect for the town of Assoius. So program change requests. Just for the interest of completeness and transparency, I kind of show all the capital requests, all the program change requests, even though many of these requests don't impact your tax requisition, but just so you can see the whole gamut of requests. But as it says here, not every property is impacted by every change request. Only those people that participate in the service pay for the service. And some change requests have an impact on user fees. If it's like garbage or water, some are taxes, some are a mix, and some we get funded through grants, so there's no impact. Or we use reserves, which is, as you know, money that we have put away in the bank for future purposes. This is the list of change requests this year. Quite a long list of requests. Not a lot of them apply actually to the municipality, to the town of Assoius. And this is really a pent-up, you know, I like to explain this slide as, after the economic crisis in 2008, the regional district went into a real cost-cutting exercise and froze positions and really reduced the size of service or size of staffing. Yet the services over the last eight or nine years have kept increasing in terms of taking on water systems and electoral areas, splitting and the population growing. So this year is almost like a catch-up. It looks like a lot of positions, but really, it's just there's not enough folks to do the hands-on work that needs to be done to deliver the services. On the next slide is the capital request, and you can see a lot of these wouldn't apply to the town of Assoius. And you can see that Princeton's getting an arena chiller, which we're on the hook for 42.5%. Karamias is getting a fire truck, which the folks in Karamias and areas B and G will contribute to, but no one in Assoius would pay into that. Next slide. This is the regional grant request summary. So regional grants are grants that apply across the region. These groups make application to the board and present, and the board decides what they want to fund. And you can see here that the South Okanagan Community Foundation, who was just here, are in line. And this budget is still draft. Until it's passed, it's not, until the ink's dry, it's still subject to change. But they're getting $30,000, are proposed to get $30,000 this year. You can see we give $35,000 to the Film Commission, which I'm thinking there is the economic development multiplier effect by bringing film and TV production to the South Okanagan. It helps stimulate the economy. The Quatlin Polytech is year two of a food security project. I don't know what the involvement of Assoius has been in that project, but this is the second year of a research project that they're doing on food security. Big Horn Air Cadets are up in Oliver, I think, is where they're located. But that's the list as it stands today, $93,000 this year. So our total budget is going down 14.7%, but that isn't entirely accurate because our operating side, we're going up 11.3%, but due to reductions in municipal debt, which we manage the debt, as you know, for municipalities, just it's by legislation, your borrowing has to go through a regional district. And the OS RHD is the regional hospital district. And you can see it's got a decrease of 15.4 million, and that's largely the completion of the tower in, at Penticton Regional Hospital. So our budget this year is 71.9 million in total, but operating expenses are going up about four and a half million. So this is the overall requisition. This is how the pie splits out. So you can see Assoius is going up 57,000. 840,000 is your contribution, and then you can see all the electoral areas. But it's a total tax requisition of 18.9 million dollars on the tax side, and the rest of the funds would come from reserve, user fees, et cetera. So the, in terms of the tax requisition, I've got the detailed slide, and I've basically said the 840 and the $57,000 increase. So the next slide would show your detailed requisition, and it's probably hard to read. And I apologize for not getting this by your cutoff for your board package last week. I was out of commission most of last week with the flu, so it's kind of put me behind schedule on things. But this is how, you can see the regional services, the shared services, the third-party boards that we participate in, which is the Basin, Okanagan Basin Water Board and Sterile Insect Release Program. And then it goes down to the average taxes per average residential property in Assoius, which is going up about $10.25 per average property from 137 to 147. And we'll go to the next slide. So in terms of the budget items, 911's going up, and these are the impact on the town of Assoius. So 911's going up 34, 38, and that's really Central Okanagan Regional District. Their dispatch costs have gone up, and they pass those costs on to us. Emergency planning has gone up $6,118, and really with the fires and floods of the last two years, they've really put a focus on emergency planning and getting ready for, they hope, what won't be a non-event this year, but there'll be something, there's going to be flooding for sure. We already know that in some areas like Sportsman's Bowl and the emergency support services. General government is going up, and that's not a large increase in costs. It's really that in 2018, we're carrying a lower surplus into the year because, as you know, when you're balancing your tax requisition, it's the surplus you carry in. If the surplus isn't there, then you have to recover it from taxes or user fees. So it's not that the budget for general government has changed that dramatically. It's just that we, last year, we had a surplus we could use, and this year, we don't have that luxury. Regional transit's going up. That's the new transit service to Kelowna, so that's a brand-new service this year. So that made service number 143 this year from 142 last year. Solid Waste Management's gone up. As I said, lower transfer to operating reserve in 2019. So they used some money they had set aside from past years to offset the tax requisition last year. They didn't have that available this year. And South Okanagan Regional Transit, a fairly large increase of 10,892. And they tell me there's Friday service starting and spare bus expansion, so that's the driver between those costs. I know their operating costs have gone up. They budgeted a higher rate for gasoline and the operations of the buses, but this is new services. In terms of shared services, the arena's going up 13.6, and that's really a capital expenditures that are financed by borrowing, and then the borrowing costs are added on to the operating expenses. But you'll be well-aware of the things you're doing to your arena down here, so it's pretty exciting. What I tried to do here was take the pie and say, for an average taxpayer, an average assessment here is 370,000. You'd pay 147. This is just how a typical, and this is just an average, so it's not, you know, doesn't portray every single taxpayer's situation because it depends on your assessment. But this is how the dollars would spread out. So you can see $65 goes towards the arena, 11 goes towards the Water Basin Board, for example, 911 is $31, and so on. But it just kind of gives you the pie locally to say, well, what do we pay for all these different services? Then we go on to the hospital district budget. So that's the second board. Same membership as the regional district board, but separate constituted board under separate legislation. So its budget is to fund capital and maintenance expenses for the hospital services in our area. Typically, we fund 40% and the health authority or the province kicks in 30 or fundraising. So their budget for 2019 is $20.1 million. And go to the next slide. So we contributed 117 million to the regional tower. 58% of that came from debt, remainder from reserves. So a nice split between reserves and taxation, so you're not always coming to the taxpayer, seeing their taxes going up year after year after year. That tower was completed, substantial completion in December. They've got, now they're renovating the remaining parts of the hospital, so they expect that to be complete in 2020. The rest of the expenditures in the budget, 5.9 million, are other equipment and renovations at the hospital. And really, the ask for 2019 is only about 1.4 million. The rest of that budget is projects from prior year that they haven't completed yet, and so we keep carrying them forward until they actually do complete them. So this is the overall budget. You can see the mill rate is .26352. So if you divide your assessment that you got in January from BC Assessment by 1,000, multiply it by that 26352, that'll give you the amount you'll see on your tax bill, assuming the hospital district budget passes as it's proposed at present. So you have 8.133%, so you pay 8.133% of those, of that budget. Total requisition, 6.4 million. Your contribution is 524,000, which is just slightly less, $1,148 less than the prior year, so pretty flat. And as I said, the average home, their bill, if your house is assessed at 378,000, your bill is about 99.64 for the hospital district, down marginally from last year. Last year was $100, so hardly any difference. And this just shows how the budget is split among all the areas. So you can see the Assoius at 524, one of the larger ones. You know, when you look at the electoral areas, you come in right after Summerland, really, in terms of size of the pie that you're consuming here. And so we're in the public consultation phase, which is coming out and doing these presentations for councils and electoral areas and for the public. So we're, our feedback, you know, I think the board is looking at feedback right up until passing the budget. We're having third reading on Thursday is coming up, so, but if you have concerns or comments, certainly welcome them either by email or by phone, or you can contact our CEO or myself, and we'll take note of them. So thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you, John, for, I think that, you know, when we're at the regional district table, we see the big picture in everybody, and I think you've done a good job of specifically targeting what Assoius pays for and why. So I'll just see if anybody has any questions. Councilor Rhodes and then Councilor King. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Corrigan. Thanks a lot, John. It's always nice to see this. I, over the last few months, I've sat through a couple of the workshops with our mayor and that type of thing, and honestly, at the end of the day, I don't know how you do it. It's just an amazing chore every year. It's complicated, it's complex and hard to understand. But I do have one question about the shared services that you kind of touched on a little bit. The arena is very understandable. I mean, I think most people get where the relationship is. But I was surprised to see the museum debt rather than just the museum. I wonder if you could explain that a little bit, and I'm particularly interested in what happens when the debt is paid off.
Yeah, that, in terms of when the debt is paid off, that I probably don't. I can probably go away and come back with an answer on that piece. I know with the museum, we have the museum piece, which is the debt when they acquired the building, which is the home hardware.
Across the street.
Building across the street. And then there's the operation side, which is also, and that is more seen on the Area A budget, for their budget, the operations piece of it. But, so there's two components of it, certainly the debt as well as the operations. And I know the rent that's coming in for those operations also goes into reserve, which is, which is used, which is going to be used for capital. I know they have an ambitious programs set to kick off in 2020 to, assuming they get the grants from the feds and provincial if the grant application's successful.
So, Mr. McCorrigan, go ahead.
So that the, on the museum, the debt's the debt. Once it's paid, that's it. And then I think Area A and both the town are making their separate operation contributions to the museum. So that's, that's, I don't know if there's anything else specifically you're looking for?
Our relationship with the arena is ongoing. It's long-term and ongoing. I was curious if that's going to change when the debt is paid.
Well, we could, what we'd have to do is structure an agreement with Area A that would be similar to the museum, if that's what council wanted to address. Right now, we've got a separate, an agreement for recreation shared services that doesn't include the museum. We would have to set up a separate agreement on the museum if there's, and I think, if I recall, the operating contribution of Area A to the museum is 12 or $15,000, some number in that amount, as opposed to council. Right now, you're providing over $55,000.
And I believe that the debt was over 20 years. Am I correct? So we've paid about five years of that, I think. Now maybe more. Can't remember when it started.
So if there is a desire to review the operating relationship of the museum in the same light as the arena, then we would have to sit down with Area A and talk about the future funding of, if in fact, you know, they want to, if their numbers are going to continue on the existing amount, or is it going to go up? Again, I think the arena, well, the recreation agreement right now is split based on population, and that's how the numbers are determined there.
Okay. Anybody else? Oh, Jim, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I was just relating to that, the health budget or the hospital budget. Does any resources go to other health facilities in the district, or is it all focused on Penticton Hospital?
No, no, their capital, they come to the, the interior health comes to the OS, the Okanagan and Smolkamine Regional Hospital District Board and present their capital budget. And really, their budget is spread across the South Okanagan, so certainly, but I think it's a matter of if you have priorities down here, it's good to get those on their radar so that, you know, they kind of bubble up to the top because they're certainly prioritizing them every year. And I know this year, they asked them, it was a good question that they asked, and they didn't, they didn't answer it, in my opinion, but someone had asked at the meeting, if you had to take, if you had to pick something to take off the table, what would you pick? And they couldn't pick anything. They said, we don't know. So even though they had their budget, they didn't know what, you know, I think everything's a priority. And maybe it's because they're so short of capital that, you know, it's kind of like sometimes you feel with your infrastructure, where do you start? Because, you know, you need to fix everything all at once, seems like.
So somewhere in that budget, it would be broken down into
Yes.
Interior Health. Ask for X amount, and they got X amount?
Yeah, it's very detailed in terms of even equipment.
Right.
And, you know, if it's equipment for the South Okanagan Hospital or for a health center, it'll say, or renovations. So, and we bring them back to do presentations, and so that would be, I mean, I think it'd probably be worth, I don't know how often they come down to the town here to present, but sometimes it's worth saying, come and present your capital budget as it pertains to our municipality.
We do get them once in a while.
No, I realize that.
And there always is something on that budget, from my recollection, for SOGH. So there's always something on there about that, yeah. Has South Okanagan General asked the hospital district, and I should know this, but I don't, for money towards the, what the redoing up there? They're redoing the emergency and the offices. Is that separate from this, or is that included?
It would be included in this. I haven't seen a separate request.
Yeah, I haven't either.
Capital budget, and they also just recently submitted their long-range plan over the next three years. But I know there's something in the budget for work down here.
Okay.
Nothing comes separately.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Well, thank you very much, John. We appreciate you taking the time, and I assume that you're at all 11 regional districts at, or nine of those and six communities, so you have a busy job.
Yeah, there's been a lot of, it's been nice, though. It's nice actually presenting the budget to the people that, the rate, the rate payer. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a report from the Acting Director of Community Services, Mrs. Dynison, on park naming policy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, at the December 17th, 2018 Committee of the Home Meeting, the Assoius Rotary Club requested to have the park at the end of Cottonwood Drive renamed Rotary Park of Assoius in exchange for providing improvements to the park such as capital projects, beach improvement, benches, and picnic tables. Staff was directed to create a park naming policy in response to the Rotary's request. Currently, the town of Assoius does not have a park naming policy. After researching policies in other municipalities, staff created a policy that specifies how a new park should be named. A copy of the proposed policy is attached to this report. The policy will not, will only be applied to new parks or existing park space that is not currently named. And the following considerations when naming a new park should be followed. named. And the following considerations when naming a new park should be followed: reference to location or geographical feature, commemoration of a historical event or be of cultural significance, commemoration of a historical person that significantly contributed to the town, recognition of a person or organization that has made a substantial financial or property donation intended to use, to be used as parkland. Town council may ask for public input into naming a new park. However, town council will have final authority in choosing the new name. So options that the attached policy be referred to the next regular open meeting of town council on March eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, for approval. That staff make changes to the policy and forward it to the next regular open meeting of town council on March eighteenth for approval. And staff recommends option one, that the attached policy be forwarded to the next regular open meeting of town council on March eighteenth for approval.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Dynison. Counselor King?
Yeah, I'll make the recommendation, option one, then I have a question.
Are you seconding that? Good, thank you. Go ahead.
My question is, if this was to move forward and gets passed on the eighteenth, when there would, there would be a proper kind of application form someone would have to fill out, or you just meet this criteria and send you a letter?
It could either be, like, the request for a naming can be public-driven or staff-driven. So there's a need that arises, or that's driven by staff, or the need arises driven by the public, really.
I guess I just go back to the Rotary request. They would come back to you, say, with some proper names and money, like in the policy?
In the, in the policy itself, it does, says that the request would be brought to council, and then council would choose to ask for the public for input.
Okay.
And then park name suggestions would be given to staff to be brought forward to the Community Services Advisory Committee. And then the committee would provide suggestions, review suggestions, prepare shortlists, and then the shortlist would be presented.
No, I read the policy.
Yeah. So it would, it would be basically a request to go to council.
Could I just speak to that comment?
Yes.
I think maybe Counselor King has noted a good addition to the policy that needs to be considered in terms of the process, and that is exactly what is the information that needs to be provided so that to assist in the decision-making? And maybe perhaps we should take this back and reconsider, throw some ideas out there because, again, you know, your question relating to the letter.
Yeah.
What would be in the letter, you know?
Yeah.
So also, what would be the contribution? You know, what is, you know, what is the, you know?
A bit of a criteria.
That's right. You know, also, what is the, you know, what, yeah, there's the, you know, exactly what is an application? So perhaps we can take this back and do some reconsideration in that area.
So you made a motion for option one. Would you prefer to change it to option two then?
Well, I can, or we just defeat, do we have to defeat it and then make?
I think we should defeat the motion.
Okay. So we'll do that first. All in favor of option one? No, all right, so.
We're defeated.
So that is defeated, and so would you like to make another option, Counselor King?
I don't know how to word it. Wouldn't be number two, though.
Excuse me.
What about Counselor Harvey?
Counselor Harvey, would you like to weigh in on this?
No, I'm with the, with the rest of you.
Okay.
Keep the motion.
Thank you very much. Counselor Rhodes, did you have something before we make another?
I was just going to suggest that it could be as simple as just an application-type of format that could be attached to the policy. I mean, the policy was pretty solid, isn't it?
Yeah, we got nothing wrong with the policy. It's just wording a new.
But should we go to option two then versus option one?
Yeah, I think, I think what the potential motion would be is option two with a specific direction to come back with an application form as a schedule to the policy.
Perfect.
Okay, you're okay with that? Are you okay with that, too? Counselor Bennett, because you seconded, all right. So, King Bennett, okay. So that, so that will then be brought back to the March eighteenth for approval, or for back to here with the changes on it? Do we have to?
I think we just bring it back to the committee of the whole meeting.
Okay.
And council can, council can review the application and see if that, if that would meet theirs, and then they could refer.
And then move it to the afternoon of that date?
Yeah.
All right, so all in favor of the motion? Thank you. I'm assuming Counselor Harvey, you're in favor as well?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Dynison. And our next item is a Cactus Jalopies promotional video. Are you going to speak to this, Mr. Menko?
Yeah, I can speak very briefly. This, the, as the email says, the Cactus Jalopies had this professionally-done video of their car show. I think it was done last year, and they just wanted to make it public and to council and to the community, and they thought that this would be a good venue for it. So it's a very short video, so we thought we'd bring it to the committee of the whole and present it to council. And I'll just kill the lights here.
Thank you. So it's on YouTube, so anybody could watch it then, couldn't they?
Yes, it's on.
Just related, I've tried a couple of times to get to their Jalopies page, and I can't seem to get to them.
Oh.
I mean, I can get the YouTube video like this, but I.
What are we doing? What are we doing right now?
Yeah.
You're telling your story.
You don't get to.
What are we doing right now?
Yeah.
You're telling your story.
Yeah, I've been coming here for about ten years, every summer.
Do you know that we're the longest-running society in this town now with this little car show? How crazy is that?
Well, we all here for the first one.
Right.
And we had a lot of fun, and everyone came back.
Yep.
Well, I've been here for, this is the twelfth or thirteenth year I've been coming here since day one.
I've known J F for a long time. You know, his whole idea, and we still carry it through today, was the Jalopies, right? You know, kind of older cars, custom cars.
It's a long story, and people don't understand, but if they Google it, they would find out how important this man is in the world of hot rods.
This whole area is full of vintage cars in various stages of restoration, really interesting vehicles.
This man, guys, has won the Riddler Award.
You're bragging me up, aren't you?
And how many times runner-up?
Three.
Twice.
Twice.
Three.
Three.
To me, it's honestly like one big family getting together, showing off all the work that they've done on their projects, and just having fun.
My first attendance at Cactus Jalopies, I was just amazed at the draw that they have. It's solely run by about eight people, and it's a ginormous event. It's actually one of the biggest events in Assoius.
I guess up to a couple of years ago, we were just really focused on our cars. And, you know, one of the things they all of a sudden asked is, well, like, how many people show up to this event? You guys keep telling us how many cars, but how many people?
I think it's ten thousand people show up for the show.
It's grown leaps and bounds over my, my seven years in the community. It does feel like there's a lot more people attending the event than I saw the first few years.
Happy people. How many cars, Jeff? Eight hundred to a thousand? Oh, sorry.
We've changed a little bit in our thinking from just cars to how we make it an event for the town.
Saturday is just mind-boggling. As far as you can see, there are cars lined along the beach and into the park area.
Come down the road up here and just see the sea of people that have come out to see, I mean, artwork in a lot of cases. But I think it becomes more than a car show. They've got the FX motorcycle jumpers here. Boy, to see a show like that and see that caliber of guys on motorcycles, you'd be paying a pretty good ticket fee to see that in the stadium. Here, it's just a free show.
There's T-shirts and things for sale.
They do a fun thing where they actually blow up a car engine, music in the band shell.
Beer garden.
And the vendors as well. So it's an event that's more than just cars. But these are events, I think, that car buffs and people look forward to annually, mark it in their calendars every year. And ours has become, what I feel, is one of the really successful ones. We're now getting people from all over Washington, Alberta, a large contingent coming out of Vancouver Island.
One of the cool things about the car show and its location, because it's right on the border, it attracts people from all over the Pacific Northwest. We have people coming from Vancouver Island, Spokane, Washington, all the way to Calgary and Edmonton. Then you've got people coming all the way from Seattle, Spokane, even as far as Portland.
In two thousand and seventeen, I was able to give away the prize for the person that came from the furthest distance, and that was from San Diego. So there's people from all down the coast of, you know, the western part of the United States.
We've really concentrated on bringing kids in, making it a family event.
Car shows in particular tend to bring out families. They attract all ages, whether it's, you know, people my age reminiscing about cars they used to see and have, or young kids seeing cars from the past. It's really a fun event.
We try to position ourselves in the community to attract families. And this is just a magical event over here to do that. Just being there, witnessing the crowds and the large numbers who are there. You know, a high percentage of them are young kids, right from babies up to teenagers. And a common denominator with everybody is everybody who's enjoying it.
And we're hoping that that next generation enjoys this enough, that they will take it, run with it, and morph it into something that's super cool by their eyes and by their imagination. So that's where I see it going long-term.
The event is reaching a wide variety of people, and car buffs don't come in a certain personality type. It's a hobbyist, and it tends to be a more well-heeled hobbyist. So if the target market for your corporation is to appeal to families and people who have a little bit more disposable income, then I'd say this is an event you'd want to get involved in.
You know, whether it's Oyster Fest, whether it's winery events, this is no different. When an event is done well in this community, it grows.
And it's well-known, it's not going to go away. It's going to get bigger and bigger every year this year.
I love it. It is an amazing town. Everyone is so friendly around here, and it's just so much fun to come here. I look forward to it every year.
Well, that's terrific. And we have two stars in there, CJ and Mike, so way to go. So I'm assuming that this may, the contact for this may go on to our town website? Is that, is that how, or, like, I wasn't sure. Or can we go on our town website?
Yeah, it could go as a link in some, someplace, maybe in our economic development.
Sure.
Or, I'm not sure exactly where, but it could be someplace.
I think that's a good idea. Counselor Rhodes?
So try not to be too shameless. I would like to mention the local component of putting that event together, and of course, this, this video, this promotional video. The video was done by a local individual. We all know that the entire event is put on by volunteers in our community. And the Riddler Award that was mentioned in the video is the Oscar, the top award in the custom car industry worldwide. It's, and J F has won it and has been a runner-up, I think, a couple of times, he said. But also, I wanted to mention that, as we sit here, he is in Detroit right now with the vehicle. The latest word that I heard yesterday was that he doesn't own the vehicle, but he did all of the work on it, made what they call a great eight, who's in the top eight. And, and I think the announcement is going to come on the overall winner sometime today, I think. So I just wanted to mention that. If you're a car enthusiast, you know anything about cars, you know about J F, and I just wanted to bring that up, so.
Thank you. And I believe it's June first, second, third, I think, this year. It's on again down at the, at Gyro Beach, so. Counselor King, did you have something?
I just had a question. Do you want a motion to put this on the website, or?
Well, I don't know if we can put it on, you know, exactly, but we'll take it.
Linked to.
Yeah, we'll, we don't need a motion to put it on. We can, we can.
We do that.
If we can do it, we'll do it.
Yeah. Good. Well, thank you very much. That was quite interesting. And it looks slightly warmer in that picture than it is today. Okay, so I believe that's, that's everything that we have for the meeting today. So could we please have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Counselor King, Counselor Bennett, all in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, Counsel-